Okay.
Oh, got it.
I just thought that was Sheila.
Very robotic.
It sounded more like Amy than Sheila.
All right. Uh, the time is now seven to one PM and I will call the meeting to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Reichel. Pro Tim Not.
Here.
Trustee Brittenall.
Here.
Trustee Klassen.
Here.
Trustee Flores.
Here.
Trustee Hanrahan. Trustee Seifer.
Here.
All right, can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, be seated. Is anyone on public comments? The first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make public comments on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, do we have any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items?
No, we did not, Mr. Mayor.
I do not show any raised hands.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, and there is nobody signed up in the chambers tonight. Uh, so we will move on to the consent agenda, which contains the minutes of the August twenty second, uh, twenty twenty-two Board of Trustees meeting and the renewal of the retail marijuana license for high Q. Do you like to discuss any of those separately or make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to present the consent agenda as presented.
No second.
Maybe we should just make sure it was to approve it.
Was that, yeah, you said, you said to present. What, did you mean to say approve?
Approve.
Okay. All right. Uh, we have a motion by trustee Seifert to approve the consent agenda as presented, uh, seconded by trustee Clausen. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, do any members of the board have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
No, sir.
I'm here.
Not here.
I've got none either. Uh, do we have any agenda changes by staff or the board?
By me?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing tonight? Okay. All right. Uh, then we'll move on to the middle Colorado, Colorado watershed council, uh, project updates with Paula Stump. If you guys want to step up to the table?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Appreciate you guys having us here. Don Randolph is here with me again. She was on our Board of Directors. And visited with us a year ago when we came through. Um, I see some new faces. Sam, I don't think I've met you before. Okay. Um, Chris, we met.
I was on P and Z when we met.
Okay, all right, that's right, you introduced yourself. Yeah, all right. Um, anyways, I'm with the Middle Colorado Watershed Council and we came here a year ago. We've come in other times as well. We've been working on different projects in the silt area, but our watershed really goes from Glenwood Canyon to Debeck. And, uh, we, um, have programs that protect and enhance the waters, um, around here, the tributaries, um, and the lands associated with it, working with the towns and working with, um, agriculture, working with industry, working with natural resource offices, just kind of a whole mix of things with, um, the, the work that we do here in the watershed. And I did have sent a slideshow. Is that?
Sheila.
Okay. There we go. Look at that. There's the boat ramp. So I just wanted to catch you up on things we're doing in particular to this area. Um, and did you want to say anything to start with or want me to dive in? Dive in. Dive in, all right. Um, so Sheila, if we can go to the next slide, um, as I said, we have, um, we did a integrated water management plan with all sorts of stakeholders throughout this watershed. And, um, the idea was how do we work together and what projects are needed to take care of this watershed? Um, and our plan is integrated into the Colorado Basin Roundtable Plan, which is integrated into the state water plan, which they are now taking comments on to officially recognize, um, for projects and goals for taking care of our water. And as I'm sure, you know, it's, it's well known that we've been dealing with years of drought and, um, that has been a lot of kind of the policy decisions, especially when you get to the state level. But our goals and our programs are, take that into mind as far as, you know, the kind of projects we do here and, and how we can help, um, enhance and protect the river and its different tributaries. But in particular for us, we have done some work here in the last couple of years. You've seen me here with AVLT presenting on the silt preserve, uh, and the work that's going on out there. We've gotten funding both last year and this year from Colorado Water Conservation Board for some water rights work out there and, uh, pond restoration and, and this October, we'll be doing some planting, some revegetation around some of that pond area, um, with some of the funding that we've gotten. Um, we also finished up, um, with a lot of work with Trey and I back and forth on getting, um, the silt boat ramp expanded, um, getting funding from the state for that. Um, the first year was really kind of engineering and design. Uh, the town of silt contributed all the labor and, um, uh, workforce as far as putting it in, but we still had to pay for road base and I was able to go find some more funding this year to help cover the costs in the second year of that project. And now you've got some great access, better access to the river. And, um, I know Trey and I have a few more things on that list that we want to do as far as parking, lining and that type of stuff, but, um, we've gotten good two years worth of work out there on that. Um, we've done some post-fire water quality, uh, monitoring and I want to get into that in another slide or two, but that has helped with the silt water treatment plant. Uh, we're also working with just kind of keeping it localized here, the silt water conservancy district. Last year, all the sediment in the river really did damage to their pump canal. That's right outside of town here to the, um, intake. And so we've gotten some funding to help them do some repair work there. Um, we're also looking at some fish passage and irrigation ditch projects in the area, working with the agricultural community. And, um, we also want to work on some gravel pit restoration. And I remember right in recent conversations with the town, the problems with the water treatment plan is maybe using one of those gravel pits as a, as a water storage, um, facility. So, you know, we hope to help facilitate that as well as we go. And next slide. Um, and I just mentioned this, this is the, um, the expansion of the silt boat ramp, so I won't go much further. We do have some temporary parking alignment there. And I haven't been out there, uh, since we finished that up and I hope people are parking in the right place.
Someday.
Someday.
Uh, but hopefully they can get in and out to that access better because we did widen that where it narrowed down to one lane. You can go to the next slide. Mentioned the silt preserve. What we've got so far right now is there's three ponds kind of going from east to west, a pond eight, nine, and 10. And this year we were able to figure out using some of the water, especially when it was a free water situation before, um, uh, the Cameo call and such was on where, um, the water rights users with higher seniority of, um, stopped us from using some water, but we were able to get some water into the first pond. Um, there's been some irrigation pipe and a lot of this work again is public works department. We get the funding, we get the expertise, we get the, uh, figure it out and then, um, Trey brings his team in and, and we work together on that. But like I mentioned earlier, we do have a planting coming up and that is October, um, fifteenth. And, uh, we'd love to see you guys join us for that day. If you have some time and come out and kind of see what's going on out there, we'd love to have you out there. Um, we just put the order in for plants. Some of it'll be seed cat seeding and some of it will be some woody plants around that pond date. The next slide. As I mentioned, uh, we have been really working with, uh, the last couple of years with, um, the water quality monitoring because of the Grizzly Creek fire. So as everybody recalls, we had the fire, the canyon shut down for a few weeks. Last year, we had the damage to the highway, the canyon shut down for a few weeks. But what also happens is with that, um, that those debris flows, that sediment comes floating downstream. And I'm sure you guys have had many conversations on what to do with the water treatment plant. So what we have done is worked with USGS that in, um, water quality monitoring. We also set up rain gauges in the canyon so that we would know when storms are hitting. So people had a little bit more warning. And, um, what we've created this year was a, um, water quality dashboard, um, that we've given, um, each town has its own, um, uh, dashboard that's, that they can set up its own parameters on. You can go to the next slide, Sheila. And what we also did was got funding so that the icon there by the town of silt, you can see that, that's a new water quality station that, um, we've put in, it takes, it takes readings of sediment and temperature. And, uh, we also had a site put in down by Rulison, which takes even more readings. There's five different parameters that they look on there, but the idea was is to give the water treatment plant as much knowledge as possible before it gets into the water plant. Um, and they can shut down the intake and talking to Sarah Flores, um, with the water, uh, treatment plant group. I think she, she run the intake and I don't know what Sarah's exact title.
Yeah, she's one of the water plant operators, the main water plant operator.
Thank you. So talking with her, she used this dashboard a lot this summer to kind of shut down the intake and start it back up kind of when she felt was comfortable. And, and we've tried to work with each town to give them the information they need. And so I was super excited when we've got the station right above, um, the town of silt so that she'd see the water quality. And I don't know if you recall last year, but what we've discovered in the water quality monitoring is that when it hits someplace like Glenwood, it comes in and it's there for a day or two. Um, and then if there's no further, um, rain or activity, it kind of flushes its way out. But by the time it gets down to silt, you get it for like six weeks. It just keeps coming and coming and coming. So hopefully this helps that out a little bit. Then next slide. This shows you that location and kind of what the reading would be, um, for sediment, I believe that's, yeah, turbidity, um, for a certain time period, just to give you an idea of what Sarah would be seeing, um, when she looks at that, uh, dashboard for herself. The next slide. And this is why I'm here is, uh, first of all, to thank you very much. Last year when I came to you, you gave us, um, some funding to help us out in two thousand twenty-one. Um, and, uh, also put it into your budget for two thousand twenty-two. And I'm here to request a little bit more help in another year coming up. This makes a big difference, uh, for us when we go out and get that funding to show it as matches against the funding that comes in. So that if I go to Colorado Water Conservation Board and say, I need this much money for, um, the silt boat ramp, then I can say, and this is how much we've gotten from the town of silt that we use as a match against it. Um, and you've provided other opportunities with those grants as well for funding, but, um, we definitely appreciate your continued support. It makes a big difference for our operations and the health of our, um, our nonprofit, it just helps us move along. So, um, I didn't know if you wanted to add to that a little bit on what you see from your perspective?
Yeah. So thanks for having us. Again, it's a pleasure to be here. As a board member of the Middle Colorado Watershed Council, we're all volunteers and I don't need to tell you, this woman is busy as our executive director. The things that she does up and down the watershed and with all the municipalities and different organizations from the CWCB to CDPH to all the other acronyms you can think of is amazing. But our board is volunteer-based. We have one other part-time paid contractor that works with us and our operational costs, as you know, for just the town of silt end up being something that we need help with. And so we look for partnerships all throughout the valley and appreciate that. And especially for towns who we could work in partnership because we know that water is important to all of us here and the team that we have and the groups that we end up partnering with, bringing in the expertise we know is helpful to you. So thanks so much. It makes a huge difference, as Paula said, and relationships are extraordinarily important to us. And so we continue wanting and, um, being very grateful for the relationship you guys are continuing to foster with us.
And I do have one other ask. Um, Jerry was very kind to work with us as a board member for a year or so, but his life got complicated and busy and we would love it if we had another representation from the town of silt. As I said, I work a lot with Trey, but it's on his job level, so I don't want him to think he's also my board member. But if, um, any of you would consider that, we would love to have your voice on the board, um, and look at the perspective of the whole watershed and the things that we're trying to be engaged in. But it makes a difference when we have a voice that can kind of give us perspective that we might not see from each town. So.
Sure. All right.
And then, um, I think the last slide is just all about maybe me, yes.
I liked you.
So, um, that's why we came tonight, just to catch you up and show you what we have been doing. We'd like to do this every year, um, and then to ask that now that you are looking at your budget, if you can consider supporting us again in two thousand and twenty-three, that would be great.
Yep. Yeah. Thanks for what you guys do.
Yeah.
Yeah. The boat ramp looks awesome.
Excellent.
So thank you. Yeah. Full support.
Yep.
From here.
Yeah, for sure.
Great.
Yep. This is one of those ones that we get a great return on our investment. So it's a hundred percent worth doing. Um, if budget goes through, I wouldn't even mind seeing if we can get them three thousand dollars instead of the twenty-five hundred.
Two likes for you.
I'd, I'd go for that, yeah.
I mean, we, we got twenty-five hundred hours worth of work on a boat ramp for sure. So.
I think.
But yeah, so I think as we go through budget, I'd like to look and see if we can maybe toss a little more at this one.
Yep.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions on what we're doing?
I know. Doing a good job.
Great. I have a quick question, Don. What's the, uh, the workload? I mean, what, talk a little bit about your time commitment.
On the board.
On the board. So it's an active board. Um, not only do we have our monthly meeting, but we put together events on a regular basis. We have several different subcommittees. The financial committee, outdoor and education committee, outreach and education committee. And so most of our board members are full-time employees in other realms, a lot in water, but we spend, I would say a minimum of three to four hours a month, not just in meetings, but then in sub, um, types of meetings as well. Um, our events are huge. So as you know, the planting we did in silt just a couple of years ago, we had a great turnout um, across the way, um, in the preserve and, uh, we have a film festival, actually that's coming up. So if you guys are interested, not only are we going to be at the Vaudeville in Glenwood Springs, but we'll be at the Ute Theater in Rifle. And that, um, is a great opportunity to learn more about different types of watershed, um, activities, not just local, but nationwide. So we have our film fest, um, and we make sure to do things like this. So Paula is continuously building relationships with new groups, um, and trying to maintain ones like silt that we already have invested. So depending on who you are on the board, um, a lot of time, especially for those that are investing in orchestrating, planning and getting the events put together. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
It does.
And we'd love to see you at the film fest, um, September twenty-ninth and October first and, uh, you can send, I can send some information on it. It would be great to have you guys attend.
And if we could put up flyers, um, here as well, that would be fantastic.
Will the U be on October first?
October first, yes, you, yep.
If you have an electronic flyer, uh, you guys, you could send it to me.
Okay.
I'll put it in our newsletter too.
Oh, that'd be excellent. That'd be great. Thank you. Yeah. And we have all kinds of door prices. So, um,
Well, that'll get them.
We can't really raffle because then we have to get a license and that's more time and money. And it's just kind of like, well, let's just get a bunch of local businesses who've contributed things. And, uh, so we'll be handing those out at each event. Yeah. And Mike, you should come too.
I will be there.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Tomorrow, I think.
You guys have a meeting?
Thank you. I don't think we ever got a time.
So sometime tomorrow afternoon was the last I saw.
That's what I saw.
No, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the Continued Resolution Number Sixteen, Series Twenty Twenty-Two. A resolution of the town of Silt, Colorado approving the second amended and restated annexation uh, and development agreement for the Dixon Annexation, formerly known as Divide Creek Center and now known as Roslinda within the town of Silt, Garfield County, State of Colorado. Turn this over to our attorney and then see if our applicant wants to go to the table.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, if you will recall from the last meeting, we had a fairly detailed discussion about the uh, annexation and development agreement. There were some, uh, requests made by the board to, uh, make a few edits from the draft that we had included in the packet. Uh, and I wanted to report back about the changes that we made, uh, in response to your comments. Uh, and to note that I think we're at the point where, uh, this document is ready for a final approval. So, uh, at the last meeting, there had been a discussion about the amount of credit that should be given for the land, uh, located within the fifteen-foot easement where the trail along the frontage road will go. And the discussion, uh, went along the lines that the board felt comfortable giving a, uh, half or fifty percent credit for that land against parkland dedication. Uh, on page four, uh, article two point two A one, and you don't have the red line in your packet, but we have adjusted the numbers related to parkland dedication and what is required for dedication as the development builds out, uh, to comply with, uh, uh, that modified credit that, uh, the board had agreed was acceptable. Uh, additionally, uh, on page eight, uh, subsection four, access to the river. Uh, we had a, a discussion at the last meeting about the timing and of, of when, uh, a trail will be built. And this is over a long county road, three eleven down to the river and the surface material. So we have added language. It's the last, uh, few sentences there that says, "The trail on the western boundary of the property shall initially be a soft surface trail until such time that track four is developed." And again, track four is at the intersection of, uh, County Road Three Eleven and, uh, the frontage road. Uh, as part of a site plan review for track four, the town shall require that the trail be reconstructed as a hard surface trail four feet in width up to the edge of the high watermark. The trail on the eastern edge of the property shall be developed as a soft surface trail. Then again, this is over by the BLM office. And if you'll recall from comments that, uh, Mark Chain had made as well as members of the applicant's team, due to the topography at that location, it would be very difficult to get a hard surface trail, uh, from the frontage road down to the water at that location. So we've included language that'll be a soft surface trail and the exact location and design standards for the trails will be finalized as part of a preliminary plan or site plan review process. Uh, again, we are expecting, uh, preliminary plan to happen fairly quickly on the heels of, of this application. Uh, so that because it is a prerequisite for subdividing this property into the, the seven or eight tracks, uh, which then allows, uh, the applicants, uh, to, uh, purchase the lots that they're interested in owning. Um, on the next page, page nine, underground utilities, we had a discussion about, uh, the existing utility configuration being above ground. Um, and I believe it was Trey who had the, uh, reference point that there was conduit that had been placed, uh, along the right of way, uh, at the location of the BLM office to allow for a future undergrounding of, uh, power lines at that location. And so what we have included in subsection K, uh, is language that says a preliminary plan or site plan review, the applicant shall include in the construction plans, uh, the installation of a conduit along the frontage road capable of hosting the existing electric distribution lines. Installation of the conduit as part of the, uh, subdivision or site plan improvement shall satisfy owner's obligation or requirement to underground electric dis- distribution lines. And what this does is leave open, uh, the possibility that as, uh, additional or new utility work is undertaken at that location, that we could use those conduits leaves to underground, uh, those lines in the future. Um, I think those were the substantive changes. Uh, the one exhibit that, uh, that is included in the packet. Uh, we did modify the, the numbers related to the credit, uh, for parkland dedication to be consistent with the language in the, in the agreement is modified. And again, I, I think that these items address the comments that the board had at the last meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions. We do have the applicant with us today.
I don't know that I have any other questions about that.
Any comments?
I don't. Well. I don't have any questions. The only comment I have is that trail on the western edge, you know, page eight, section four, saying four feet, I kind of think it should be wider because someday if it actually does connect under the bridge or if someday there actually is some sort of pedestrian bridge over to the Silt Island Dog Park, then I kind of feel it should be wider to accommodate that.
I, I guess I would say that, I mean, that this would constitute the developer's commitment in terms of, uh, building that trail. Uh, the discussion we heard at the last meeting is, is that parcel four probably is one of the latter parcels that will develop. Uh, which means that the soft surface trail will be in place again until a, a development plan is, is brought forward for parcel four. Uh, and if, you know, at that point in the future, the town has a, a concrete plan to, um, uh, do a pedestrian bridge over to the island where the dog park is located, or if the county were to decide to reconstruct, uh, the bridge over the river, allowing for an underpass at that location. I mean, that the town could tag team with the developer to add another, uh, four feet of asphalt or concrete at that location. So I, I, I mean, that it, it, it wouldn't be an obligation that the developer would necessarily have to pay for that, but at the same time, as part of a site plan approval, that if the town felt it had good reason to upsize that trail, uh, you know, we could partner with the developer to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, the only thing I've got is I still think we're giving up too much, getting a trail that they were going to build anyway, has parkland dedication, um, and getting the bottom of a river has parkland dedication. And I feel like the trail was built, was going to be built no matter what, this subdivision. So it just happens to be, we're building it. Here you guys go. That's what we're going to give you. The bottom of the river, it's it's not a point of river where anyone's going to use. It's, we've already talked about it. It's on the fast water side of the river. It's, the access is basically unusable to get down there. Um, and then, um, you know, I talked about the trail, potentially we, on all this passes around and even applicant, um, Chris took some pictures of under the bridge. Where it's obvious that we can't get a pedestrian bridge. This is low water, um, high water. It's never going to happen. Trey did some research and, uh, eight foot by eight foot box culvert, ninety feet long to go underneath that, that road is just a little over a hundred thousand dollars. That's for just a box culvert. It's not delivered. That's not installed, but I still think that project falls away short of the six-figure number that had been mentioned at the last meeting.
Seven-figure number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I, the applicant's done a great job with this. Our staff has done a wonderful job with this. Um, I just think the town's giving up too much. So.
Explain more on that long culvert that you guys were talking, like, what is that?
Yeah. So it's, it's going to be technically what crosses underneath I seventy.
Right.
It's a box culvert. It's a concrete box.
Okay.
Eight feet wide, eight feet tall.
Okay.
Ninety feet long to be able to go.
And just place it under there. Well, I mean, I'll place it.
It'd be on the north side of the bridge, which would give it an access sub, subterranean between this development. sub- subterranean between this development and the Holiday Inn parcel.
Yep. And then what happens when the water rises?
This is on the north side of the bridge.
Well, right, but wouldn't there?
So past the
It'd be at the elevation.
At the elevation. Yeah, so we're not even down. We're not down on the riverside. This is above the river.
Oh, I see.
Almost by the Holiday Inn.
Yeah, so if you go down there right now, the Holiday Inn Trail ends at the embankment.
Yep.
So it would be theoretically right across that parcel. It was a major thing in the previous, I mean, agreement was to have a bridge underneath there. That's not going to work.
You're right.
I think in five years, ten years after this parcel's developed, that it's going to be something like why didn't we do this?
Sure.
And it's and it's not going to happen.
So Norton, more north of the river.
Yep.
From the bridge.
So yeah, so completely after you cross the bridge and start your descent to the stop sign. It would be across there. Expensive, yes. You know, I think we're far enough along and the the process is not worth maybe going back and trying to do a even a cost sharing agreement with the
Right.
applicant to make that happen. With the way this is written, I'll be, I'll be voting no on it. So I think we're giving up too much.
It's a tough one for sure because, yeah, I think it'll be good for 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 the town as a whole, but at the same time, you know, I don't want to make a decision where, like you said, in five years, we're going, well, shoot.
I was, I just think you have to look at it in the in the future. If it wants to happen, the town's paying for it.
You think it's that important to have that?
I do.
Where it is.
I think that makes that whole south side of the highway flow together. I think without a a direct connection, it breaks it up into multiple places. We've talked about all over town, trying to eliminate our pedestrian traffic crossings at the same rate.
Right. And I just think sometimes it's just not feasible. You know? I think I would be in support of this without that culvert, you know, I think that what we've talked, so the only what what I do slightly agree with mayor on, you know, is the fact of like the parkland dedication space. You know, in the in the the land that we are getting in terms of them being able to use as that credit is really not usable for us at all. You know, so I do have a little bit of a hang up, I suppose, with that, but I mean, I think that I think that the project overall is a is a plus, and I like the idea of it. I think it would be a nice nice thing for the town. You know, my my point right now is all of that land right now is private. Nobody can access it anyway right now. You know, to where maybe if this moves forward, that's a lot more usable, more people can enjoy that space. And I think that that's positive for the town, so.
I think the benefits from this project to the town outweigh what we're losing for. Because there is, you know, that thing has said that that area where the where the events are going to be will be accessible but closed during certain events, which is understandable.
Yeah.
You know, so that's a plus there. And I don't know that the that tunnel is actually Feng Shui with the hotel Holiday Inn. It kind of seems like, you know, a a tunnel to a concrete city opposed to like we're going a tunnel into like a nice forest, you know, or another another type of tree, tree, a bunch of trees and garden type area, you know. But I also don't know what's going to come in that, what is it, fifteen fifty five for a front area either, so.
Oh, yeah, the one next to it, you mean? Is that the one in front of it you're talking about?
Something like if that's going to be like a Chili's, we're still in a giant parking lot.
Yeah.
You know, we're taking a tunnel to a parking lot or to, you know, to, but.
I think eventually, I don't know, maybe we'll see some sort of a restaurant or something there.
Yeah.
I don't know, but I mean, that's a fair point, I guess. So.
That's where I stand.
Yep.
I, you know, I guess I wouldn't really. My thought is to hold up right now on that box of that tunnel for two reasons. Number one, I know for a fact, we tried to get the pump canal across the county road, a three foot culvert, and it took two years for the county. So I'd hate to hold up this project. Because this could take, you know what I'm saying? It could take a while to get approval to get cut that through there.
Yeah.
That's, that's actually, that's a town road. To the bridge.
Oh, to the edge of the bridges, town. Oh, okay.
Goes county.
Okay.
After the bridge.
Interesting.
I could still think I could move forward without that for right now. I don't know. Yeah, it's kind of a tough one. Five years from now to be changing, but.
As far as having this development pay for it, it's either now or not.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
I agree. I agree. If it don't happen now. Yeah, with another.
I I think that, um, as far as the parkland dedication stuff, I mean, it'd be nice to have it be able to be ball fields or whatever is what we all like to see, but it doesn't fit with what they're doing or really what the land is over there to make that work. Um, and so they have met the conditions according to what our codes and stuff are. And if they're meeting that and they're doing those things, then that's why I understand that. I understand the mayor's thing of wanting to have the some kind of a, making sure the safest safest access point possible. Um, there has been work talked about when they developed that there would, there will be a safe access from track four to the Holiday Inn and all that stuff's done. There's already a stop sign up at the corner, which isn't, I mean, nothing to hundred percent, but that at least may will do it. So I mean, I'm in favor of what's done because nothing else has been, we've done a ton of work on it already that we're not going to get everything we want, unfortunately, and so yeah, get something going.
Did applicant like to add anything? Okay. All right. This is just an actual item, not a public hearing, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number sixteen, series twenty twenty two, as it's presented here.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem not to approve the continued resolution number sixteen, series twenty twenty two, second by trustee Brittenall. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes forward to.
All right, okay, there we go.
Okay. Uh, next up is the continued second reading of ordinance number thirteen, series twenty twenty two. An ordinance of the town of Silk, Colorado, amending zoning ordinances, number nine, series of twenty thirteen, and establishing planned unit development zoning for annexed land formerly known as Divide Creek Center and now commonly known as the Reslinda Plan Unit. Now I will turn this over to our attorney.
So you will see on PDF page fifty two of your packet, an updated memo from Planner Chain that discusses the the PUD guide that's presented in the packet. This is essentially the zoning for the property. And because it is zoning, it's enacted by ordinance. It's all legislative matter. You've already approved the first reading of this ordinance. Mark has, you know, indicated that the, we had in advance of the last meeting, I think it was four or five changes that the board had requested that we put into the the PUD or modify the PUD guide as it had been presented. At the last meeting, there was, all of those changes were agreed upon. There was some continued discussion about the number of required parking spaces for a two bedroom multifamily unit. And the board continued to maintain that the two spaces was the appropriate parking amount for a two bedroom multifamily. That has been maintained in the the draft that's in front of you. Again, I I don't remember on the PUD guide at the end of the last meeting, there were really any additional substantive comments about the zoning. But I'm happy to assist with any questions.
Oh, I didn't have any further questions about the zoning.
I don't have any questions about the zoning either.
So this is a public hearing. And if the applicant wants to make any comments.
Okay. The time is now seven forty one PM, and I will open up the public hearing in regards to ordinance number thirteen, series twenty twenty two. Persons designed to make public comments on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function, the meeting program or any emails or phone calls in regards to this agenda item, Sheila.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I do not show any raised hands.
All right, thank you, Amy. Uh, the time is now seven forty two PM, and I'll open up to further discussion by the board or motion.
Go for the discussion for me, yes, no?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the continued second reading of ordinance number thirteen, series twenty twenty two as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Clausen to approve approve ordinance number thirteen, series twenty twenty two, seconded by trustee Seifert. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So with that, we have completed the initial approvals for this one.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you guys have done with this, working with us.
Okay.
All right.
We look forward to it. Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is resolution number seventeen, series twenty twenty two. A resolution voiding resolution number twelve, series of twenty twenty two, which allowed the special use permit for an employee housing unit at lot ninety four Silk Trade Center within the town of Silk, Colorado, and I will turn this over to attorney Sawyer.
So, Mr. Mayor, back in May of this year, the board approved a special use permit allowing for a accessory dwelling structure to be located on a lot out of the Silk Trade Center. That is required in the PUD for the Silk Trade Center that there has to be an SUP approval. The zoning is such, according to my conversations with Mark, that not every lot is guaranteed to get a SUP for an accessory structure. And Mark received word from the applicant that they were not going to move forward with putting the accessory structure in on this lot, and he felt that for record keeping purposes to know how many additional ADUs could be built on that property, it was best to to void the prior resolution.
Oh, God.
Seems pretty simple.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number seventeen, series twenty twenty two.
Uh, motion by Mayor Pro Tem not to approve resolution number seventeen, series twenty twenty two, seconded by trustee Brittenall. All's in favor? All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have the first reading of ordinance number fourteen, series twenty twenty two. In order to the town of Silk, Colorado, approving the sale of the town owned property located on Highway six and twenty four east of the Come and Go service station and property unneeded for any governmental purpose. Turn this back over to attorney Sawyer.
Want to roll tonight?
Yeah, you are.
So as the the board is aware, the town acquired property located between the come and go service station and the large wetlands area along Highway six a number of years ago. The town then undertook to do two things. The town replatted the area that it owned as a designated parcel upon which development could occur. Did three things. We entered into an access agreement with Come and Go so that there would be one joint access point to both Come and Go property and and this property. And then Public Works undertook to add additional fill to non-wetlands area on the lot. We have had this property on the market with our broker, Joe Carpenter, for a while. The board approved moving forward with a real estate purchase contract. Believe back maybe in April. A while ago. Yeah, maybe it was March. At the time, the you know, we we were told that it was going to be a a retail sales outlet. And we're not given further information, so we built into that contract requirements that at certain points in the future, the buyer had to divulge what type of retail outlet this would be and to demonstrate that they have a signed lease because the intent of the town in purchasing this property was to make available land for retail sales and and ultimately sales tax generation. We have now received a final signed lease between the contract purchaser and Family Dollar.
Family Dollar.
Family Dollar.
All right.
Which based upon the you know, sales numbers that have been discussed with with the council again back in in March or April will be a nice addition to the town's sales tax generating ability. So under your town charter, there is a requirement that when the town disposes of real property, you have to do so by ordinance. You are one of the lucky communities that does not have to hold a public vote on that. But it does require the formality of an ordinance and and a public hearing in order to to do that. So the ordinance that's presented to you for first reading allows for, again, assuming it's approved both on first and second reading, for that property to be sold and a closing to be scheduled so that the contract purchaser can begin work on developing the site. And happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Oh, I think just as our town attorney that reviews it, it sounds like they've met all the requirements of the purchase contract that were laid out, right?
Yep. I mean, obviously, they have to bring the money.
Well, of course, yeah. Up to this.
Yes.
But right now, we can vote down the sale of that property.
I'm sorry, say that again.
The sale of that property, is what you're saying.
This is, this is essentially, and again, your charter requires that you enact an ordinance allowing for the property to be sold. And if you approve this ordinance on first and second reading and if the buyer brings the money to the closing, you will have authorized the sale of that one.
Because I feel Family Dollar, right in the center of town, is a disservice to our citizens. And I mean, I regret being a part of it this far, so that's where I stand on this.
All right, I, it's fine place for it. Maybe just fine.
I mean, I I just feel the town should have kept it just as a parking area to make the wetlands into a park someday, but I'm not necessarily opposed to having a Family Dollar next to Come and Go.
Appropriate use of the property. It fits everything that we've asked for and so important.
I think so too. And I think Justin said it fine.
Yep. The town acquired that parcel to bring in a sales tax generating business, which is
What it is.
We're doing with it. Yeah. Any further discussion, I'll open the public here. Uh, the time is seven fifty PM, and I will open up the public hearing for ordinance number fourteen, series of twenty twenty two. Persons designed to make public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function, the meeting program or any phone calls or email shielding in regards to this agenda item.
No, sir. I do not show any raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Alright, thank you. Alright, the time is seven fifty-one PM and I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number fourteen, series twenty twenty-two.
Now, we have a motion by Mayor Protem not to approve ordinance number fourteen, series twenty twenty-two, seconded by trustee Brittenall, all's in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes forward to. Next up is resolution number eighteen, series twenty twenty-two. A resolution of this town of Silk Board of Trustees to authorize the town administrator to approve the sale and execute closing documents. Indeed, for the town owned property located at one zero zero seven highway six and twenty-four. I will turn this back over to attorney Sawyer.
So this resolution is an implementation of the ordinance. I guess hypothetically, it could be pushed off to the next meeting, but I don't see any harm in in approving it today. The title company is going to want to see a resolution executed by the mayor and attested to by the town clerk. That Jeff is authorized to sign the the closing documents for the sale of the property and this resolution facilitates that.
Got it. Makes sense, everybody?
Yes.
Very nice.
Alright, okay. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution number eighteen, series twenty twenty-two.
Motion by Mayor Protem not to approve resolution number eighteen, series twenty twenty-two, seconded by trustee Brittenall, all's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes five to one. Next up is the continued first reading ordinance number eleven, series twenty twenty-two. We have a staff request a continuance to the September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
I would just note that we we have made some good headway. Trey has been in touch with the Public Works team from the town of Frisco who has a very similar. Provision in their code kind of to understand how the shadow conduit. Would work, how it would function in practice, and we intend to be prepared with a staff memo and. For your full review at the next meeting.
Make a motion for the continuance of the first reading of ordinance eleven, series twenty twenty-two till the September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Seifert to continue the first reading ordinance number eleven, series twenty twenty-two. To the September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two Board of Trustees meeting, seconded by trustee Clausen, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And up next, we have the request to purchase an out of town water taps for three fifty-three West Vista Drive. Joshua Wilson is the applicant. It's east.
Says. Oh, it does say west.
It says W, yeah.
Okay. We will turn this over to Director Foner, and are you our applicant? Would you like to step up to the the table here? Alright, if you just want to state your name and address for the record.
Joshua Wilson, three fifty-three East Vista Drives, so.
Alright, so Mr. Wilson. Is looking to subdivide his property up at three fifty-three East Vista Drive. You have a map. Of what that property is gonna look like, the lot three is the residence that is currently on the. On the property. And then lot one and two is what he is proposing to do when he. Proceeded with the county on the subdivision, the county asked him to come to the town to talk about possibility of serving him with water. So on some background of the Sunrise subdivision, back in nineteen seventy-nine. The town entered agreement with them to put our storage tank up there for water. With that agreement, they got fifteen taps. On that system. Through the years, we've added more taps recently, we had a one earlier this year, if you remember right. On there, we are currently serving eighteen. Residents up there. Mr. Wilson is asking for three taps, none of these taps will be prepaid. When the property sells, they will tap at that time onto the water line, paying the. Tap fees, water rates and everything that is current at that time. The third tap that Mr. Wilson is asking for is for his property where the house already exists. He has a well, he wants to continue to use his well, but. He was asking for that third tap in case his wall goes dry, he'll have permission for the tap. But it, the same thing applies, he will pay the tap fee at that time. The only fee that we are requesting upfront at the moment is at the time. That he is approved for the subdivision and. Michael can help me to make sure I get it right. We're gonna get with the county and at the time he's approved to subdivide, he will pay the water rights in lieu of fee. Since he will not, he is subdividing, but he's not bringing any water rights, and currently that's. Right around eleven hundred dollars per EQR. Mr. Wilson's also stated that he would put in the paperwork that they could only do single family residents up there. And then. All the other would apply their out of town pressure zone to. Each lot will have its own individual meter. As you can see on the plat that he's provided with us or the map he provided. The dotted line in the middle is an easement. That is our main water trunk line that runs up to the tanks in Sunrise. We will not allow them to tap onto that line, they will have to tap onto the line out in East Vista. That would be a better service line to be on than our main line running up to our. And I believe that pretty much covers it all and I'll answer any questions or if you have any for Mr. Wilson, he is here.
If you'd like that or another.
Trey did a beautiful job.
Okay.
So there there are a couple of things that I I think when you. Make, if a motion to approve is made by the board, that should be included as. As conditions of approval, so as Trey mentioned. When we agree to serve property, we require at the time that the subdivision plat is recorded that. The applicant pay the fee in lieu of water rights dedication and no water rights are gonna be dedicated here, so. One condition would be again that that the applicant agreed to have as a condition of approval with Garfield County. That at the time of the recordation of the subdivision plat, that he will come in and pay to the town of Silk of the water rights dedication. Second, the the town is only approving indoor. Taps, we're not approving irrigation.
That was my question.
Yep, for this property.
I forgot to mention that, but he is aware of that.
Yep, and so we need as as another condition of approval if if you so. If you go in that direction, that no outdoor irrigation may be made with water provided by the town of Silk. And the the final approval, so. I'm not specifically familiar with the zoning and the county for this property, but in certain locations. You may have the right under what's called a limited review, which is administrative. To. Have an ADU on your property. And again, for the water rights dedication that that we're requesting as part of this approval, it would only be for three single family residences. So as a third condition, it would be that water service is limited to three single family residences. And no accessory dwellings unless modified by the board.
And the worksheet that is included in this packet. That does not, we didn't put the water rights in there. We missed that on this original one that came into packet. And also that's the cost as of if they wanted to put taps in today.
Right.
But the taps will go in when the property sells and whoever buys the property puts the tap in, so there's no. Prepayments or anything.
And those tap fees would be the current tap fees at the time when he applies, correct?
Or one that.
Whoever.
Whoever the virgin, yeah, sorry, whoever.
This, if it didn't happen for three years, it's whatever they are in three years.
Okay.
This is just allowing them to have the taps.
So what what will happen is the town will issue to the applicant a letter. Saying that the the town has sufficient water rights to serve their development and has agreed to provide water. And that then allows the county to check water off the list of requirements that they have.
So my question is, so we agreed to fifteen taps. And you're coming after three, so who who, I don't understand, who gets the other taps?
The fifteen taps were original taps given to that subdivision. In lieu of payment for the land that we got the tank on, so then fifteen taps have already been put in.
Alright.
And have been in service since that tank went up.
These are three separate beyond.
Yeah, these are three new ones, which we have eighteen up there now.
Are those?
This would be twenty-one.
I'm only curious, are the three outside of the fifteen, are those three properties though still in that Sunrise development?
They are.
They are, okay. So these would be, you you would be the first applicant that's actually not within that development.
No, there, he's in that development.
Oh, is that actually part of Sunrise where you are?
I'm in the agreement that Trey's talking about because of the easement that goes through the hay field, so.
Oh, I see, they had to, they had to run that, they had to run it through.
Even though my parcel is actually part of track fifteen.
Yeah, yeah, he's here.
Right there on that water line comes down right through his property.
Oh, okay. Oh, to feed Eagles Nest or whatever, or Eagles View?
Yeah, it comes down to our eight hundred thousand gallon tank.
Is that the Sunrise tank right there?
Yep.
Okay, I got you. I see. Alright, I got you. Were you the owner of the property when they ran that water line through there?
No, I was not, and I was born in nineteen seventy-nine, so I guess. But, um, no, I was not, I actually found out about it after I bought the property.
So for me, I I'm solely gonna defer. To the water people and our attorney as far as water rights, you know, like. So we have a lot of discussions right now about the needs of our water plant, like it needs upgraded, like we have some. We have some limitations there, so like we have some pretty in-depth discussions about the growth of Silk within city limits. Do we have enough water to support that, and now we're looking at maybe supplying water outside of that? I just wanna know what the water experts think about that, because other than that, I don't have an issue, I mean, they're gonna pay triple the rates, I mean. They're they're paying for it.
My question is, so are you are you developing your entire property or a parcel of it?
So right now, it's one parcel that's almost seven acres, it's six point seven acres. It's zoned rural, so it has to be two acres or above, it's actually a minor subdivision that we're doing, not a major subdivision. So it's gonna be two extra lots and then the parcel will still have my lot, so it'll be three lots in total, going from one to three lots. And then there'll be two lots, I have a picture here, if you guys wanna look at it, it has a little aerial in the background, but basically right now, it's a hayfield. That'll have two lots in it.
On Google Earth, it's a, it looks like a giant hayfield, I don't even know if you're gonna come back later trying to subdivide other parts.
I only have the one parcel, the other owners own the square ones around me and whatnot, so they'll they'll have to come talk about.
So that's part of the hayfield right here that I'm looking at in the Google Earth.
They are, yeah, so my property, the hayfield splits right through the middle, if you look at the risers on there, you'll see the risers in the field, that's. Approximately where the property line is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure in the future, all these other parcels someday will ask to be untown water. Maybe not.
I mean, I assume eventually they probably will, and at that point, they would order the town and be annexed, so we would get. Property taxes.
Right.
Right, yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, this this property is not touching anything, so we can't annex it, it's just. I need. These people will be paying three times the.
Right.
The water rate.
Yeah, and three times the tap fee, isn't it?
No.
Three times the tap fee, two times the water rate.
So the tap, the tap fee itself is gonna be thirty-three thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, so twenty-seven thousand per tap.
Yeah, if they do it this year.
Right, I mean, yeah.
Till next year, depending on what the tap fees are.
And then three times the water rate.
Yeah.
So are you gonna tap your tap your house this year?
No, again, like I said, the water or the wells running good right now, but it's kind of thinking for the future and then not having to come in and. Do another meeting, just kind of saying three at once and.
Not make sense.
At this point, you might be better off than the town.
Well, if you look at it, not that it's any of our business, I suppose, but I mean, like if he has approval. For for a city water tap, like that drastically increases the value of that land in my opinion.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Anyhow, as water folks, like any issue with just providing additional water to an outside of Silk resident, I mean.
What I would say is that from a legal water supply, that is the water rights, you have.
Plenty.
You have the capacity to serve this property.
Yeah.
I know that that from the physical treatments side of things, you know, the town is working through some issues, but I. I haven't been at the.
Sure.
At the juncture of that.
Here's another question, and this might just be like way too into it, but. You know, when we talk about water rights and the use of water and like consumptive water, right, so. You know, granted, so we track how much water we produce, how much water we send out, we track how much water goes back into our water. Waste water and then back in the river, well, I'm, would this be considered? Just consumptive, because all of this water is gonna go straight into a septic tank. And out that way, like we don't get any return of that water at all like we do right now, so how does that calculate into? The use of the water rights, I suppose.
So it's probably something Trey and I should follow up on with Michael Arian. I don't believe the town serves that many people that are on septics outside of. Town limits, but you, the assumption in water court approvals is that. Water on a septic system returns eighty-five percent of what you provide back to the river. But as opposed to being fairly instantaneous, that is, the water gets diverted, treated. Goes into the house, goes into the sewer and then back to the back to the river, it's a more attenuated process because the water percolates. Down through the septic and eventually makes its way back to the river, and that that does have. Some timing implications, but a-again, given the number of. Units that the town serves on septic, those those would be fairly minor to.
Yeah, okay, so it's not a, not even related, it can say.
I mean, I I think it's a, it's a good point, and it's one that. Again, I think Trey and I should talk to Michael Arian about.
It was thirty taps, it'd be a different conversation than three taps.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Well, again, we are really going for the, trying to fit the community up there in the rural field, so it will just be single family homes on these lots, and we're not trying to. You know, put any multi-units or anything like that on their tax of water, and we do have. Irrigation rights with project shares, so the irrigation itself won't be even a temptation for somebody to.
Oh, yeah.
City water and that kind of stuff, so.
That's awesome.
We're already thinking about all that kind of stuff, it's really just for the domestic and house. And really just for the two right now until, you know, ten years when my wells dry or whatnot.
Yes. Sunrise on the sewer system?
No, it's not.
It's not, so they have septic too?
Yeah.
Yeah, everything up there is septic systems.
I don't have a problem with it.
No, I don't have a problem with it either.
I'm good with it, we just need to make sure we get all those, that the fee and lieu will be paid at the time the plat is recorded by the county. That it can only be used for domestic uses and only for single family residences, no ADU.
Yep. I did not write that down. Anybody else? I didn't write it down.
If you can read my. You can read my scratches.
Well, sir, I, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request to purchase an out of town water tap for three fifty-three. East Vista Drive, Joshua Wilson, with the following. Conditions that at the time of plat recorded, the applicant pay the in lieu of fee for water rights. That the water is only used for domestic use, and the water is only to be used for a single family residence and no ADU.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mayor Protem not to approve. Motion by Mayor Proton not to approve the request to purchase out-of-town water taps for three fifty-three East Vista Drive, uh, by Joshua Wilson. With the three stated conditions, uh, motion was seconded by, uh, trustee Seifert, all's in favor. All's opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Good to go.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks coming down.
Okay, yes, thank you very much for all your work, Trey, I appreciate it. Appreciate it, guys.
Yes.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Thanks, you too.
All right, next up is administrator and staff reports.
Since we're on water, talk about that. Um, as you know, Panoramic Mesa has approached the town, they are under a state drinking water enforcement act. Um, I have been talking with them, and this is nineteen houses up there. Um, originally, we thought there might be some negotiations because they were looking at putting in a new storage tank for us. The property owner is not going to allow that, so there won't be much negotiations, they want town water, they're gonna have to pay to come and get it. And take it up there, it's if it's approved by you for the most part. Um, but this is something nineteen taps that, as, um. Attorney Sawyer was saying, we probably need to talk with Michael Ari on about the septic and the return rate and all that. Because this would be nineteen taps if it got approved.
This is one more time to come out by the church at the end, or they would come off by the church there and go that.
Go up First Street and then West on Silt Mesa with the panoramic.
How good a pressure would they have if they don't have a tank?
They would be off of the. Sunrise tanks, so they would have. Oh, I'll have to look again, he did the calculations because we're, they were hoping they could get a tank site to bring a tank into town. It would almost be the same elevation as our sunrise tanks.
Oh, okay.
So, um, we're looking, they're looking at a couple of different options that. Once they get it figured out, we'll be in front of you with the couple of different options that they might be looking at.
Can them tanks handle nineteen more taps? They would come off the tanks right off of sunrise?
Yeah, they'll come off the sunrise, the seven hundred thousand gallon tank.
That we come off of that, okay.
So I guess I should ask this last time for you, but, um. What kind of liability or is the board looking at and the town looking at for knowingly know that our water plant has issues and still handing out water?
So, uh, again, I mean, that's a very legitimate question. Uh, and, uh, you know, it's, it may be part of a larger discussion that I'm not sure I. I'm fully up to speed on in terms of what needs to be done at the water treatment plant. You know, if there are concerns about. Uh, the plant's ability to treat sufficient water for growth that has been approved in town plus meaningful growth. Outside of town, i.e. nineteen taps. Uh, that seems to me to be a legitimate conversation that the board should have.
I would definitely wanna have that conversation.
Yeah. That's a lot of tabs. Yeah, stressing them.
So I, you know, it it seems to me that this proposal raises, uh. A number of questions, uh, the first one being the adequacy of our water treatment plant. And again, it's it's not that that nineteen units is gonna push us over the edge, but you know, you you. This board has approved a fair amount of development that's coming online over the next few years. Uh, then, uh, second of all, the question about the tank sizing and capacity, I mean, I think we would want. Trey to have an opportunity to talk with Derek and just make sure everybody was comfortable with with that. Uh, and then as a, you know, as a final question. To talk with Michael Arian about this question, because those those lots would be on septics, I'm I'm assuming. And just making sure that as, you know, uh, we've got it, what's called an accounting mechanism in place, we submit an accounting to the town every. Or to the Division of Water Resources every year, showing how we've made replacements to the river for the water that we're using. And just making sure that we're factoring in, uh, some amount of, uh. Water service provided to users who are using septics as opposed to the town sewer system.
So that's a problem for them, that's not going away then, I mean.
No.
Right?
Now they're got well issues plus, um.
Their quality.
Total dry element things.
Yeah, I mean.
Queen by product, there we go, that's what I was looking.
Out of the well up on the mesa there?
Yeah, currently their wells are not producing enough for them, and they're actually hauling water out of. He believes it's from the bulk water stations here in town, up to their tank that they have.
Has there been any grab about the, uh, uh, when we raised the price on that for the bulk water? Has anyone said anything?
Oh, yeah, there's been a few, but.
Nothing crazy.
They're off the commercial bulk water, which was always higher than the other, but, yeah, we've had on the coin-operated one when we raised it up. We had a lot of people complaining about it, and a lot of people started going someplace else. And some of them was like, I get it, it's the price of doing business.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we might have to do it again.
It's been next reviews, it's a, we had a few in town hall.
I mean.
Valuable resource that we're running at low on.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. Alright.
So I I I think if 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 the town is open to this proposal. Uh, there is some additional due diligence that the town needs to do, and and to be honest, we probably would wanna communicate back to. What's the name of the development again? Panoramic Mason, say, listen, if if you want us to determine the feasibility of serving you. You need to put some money down, because we're gonna spend some money on engineers to take a look.
Yeah. Well, and I think that Sam's question is probably just the most important, I think, you know, it's just. Where that liability may or could fall, just knowing that we have, you know, I I I would think that, like. Many municipalities have, like, major upgrades that need to be done, like, at their water facilities, I guess, for me, is I don't know. Like, where we fall in that, you know what I mean, like.
So that's, uh, I'm sorry.
No, that's that's pretty much it, you know, like, are we in like? Level red, oh my god, what are we doing, are we in like, you know, like, high, like, green to yellow, like, you know what I mean, that's kinda. I don't have that experience with it.
The the other municipality that I represent, the town of Minter, has a seventy-five-year-old water plant, and they're in level red.
Okay.
Uh, and they have enacted a development moratorium.
Oh.
And the way that, the way that these issues generally are resolved is, I mean, again, the questions you're asking, it it. informs making good decisions about how much additional service the town can provide, but essentially what happens is if. The amount of development starts to catch the treatment capacity of the plant as to what can be provided on a. Safe and consistent basis.
Yeah.
You're gonna find yourself enacting a a moratorium on building.
Right, we certainly don't want everyone to get to that point, so.
And and again, I I I know that Dewberry's still in the middle of their. You know, analysis and and they'll be coming back to you with phased options. Uh, but if, you know, part of, part of what they do should be to say, well, if you think your growth rate is this. And we know that about this time, or this much service, there's going to be, uh, some potential. Physical abilities to meet the the demand, the town needs to think critically about what it's doing.
So so I don't wanna get way off track on this, and this could be a discussion for another meeting, but my here, I have a thought on the whole, like, Dewberry. Engineering and that little presentation they sent us last time. Can we tell those guys that we don't have fifty million dollars or that we don't have twenty million dollars? And that they need to engineer something that may cost five to eight million dollars that we can actually, like, get to? You know what I'm saying? I mean, I I can't imagine going to a homeowner that has a hundred thousand dollar house and saying. You need a seven million dollar, it it was outrageous to me, I just.
We're.
I don't know why they're engineering this thing at such a high level.
Well, the, we have a couple of problems that we're dealing with at the plant. And the the reason it's the thirty million is because, yes, we're looking at breaking it up. We can do like the pre-treatment, but all that's gonna do is pre-treat the water for us, it does not expand the capacity of that plant.
Right.
Because the skids that are there, whether we'll be able to. Keep the membranes longer, because we're not hitting it with this dirty water with the pre-treatment, but it doesn't do anything for capacity.
Right, I guess maybe the point I'm trying to make is like, the like.
Phase it in.
Not even that, like, they're engineers, but I think there's like part of their engineering study is I think they should have like. A balance sheet of what the town makes and has available and could potentially make in like. Engineer some balance there, if that makes sense, you know, that's that's all I'm saying, I don't know if anybody else feels that same way.
I've always seen a couple quotes from two different, two or three different engineering firms. I've never just seen just one engineer firm just going, hey, build us something, or what do you got? I mean, up in Snowmass, we had four or five engineering firms bid on, uh, pro- on our upgrades.
Dewberry is not contracted, build, design anything, they're just saying, this is what you need, here's the options. This is the estimated cost of them. When we go to actually design, build and all that, it will go out to bid, like a normal project, this is just. Basically, an audit of both the plants, here's your problems, here's what you need, here's what it's looking like it's gonna cost.
Right. And you, you know, it it's appropriate for Jeff and for Trey to give some feedback to Dewberry about the cost question. I can tell you again, because I have been more involved in in the, again, water treatment plant. Construction issues or designing construction issues up in Minter, we initially, uh, you know, and we had kind of the. The preliminary analysis by the first engineering firm, they thought it was gonna be a twelve million dollar plant, they're now talking thirty.
Oh, yeah.
And that's on the backs of, uh, nine hundred ratepayers. And so without the ability to go out and get grants. Uh, I mean, it is, I mean, I think this is where Kyle's going, I mean. The discussion has been is water rates could be two hundred and fifty dollars a month, which. There's some economic differences between Minter and and here, but I mean, it's just, that's not a politically. Tenable position, but if the cost of a skid is four million dollars, and if the cost of constructing the building to house. The skids is X million dollars, and I mean, you don't, you don't necessarily have a lot of options in terms of. Um, there's, you know, there's only a couple technologies out there, and they cost a certain amount of money, and you gotta have a building to put them in. And you gotta have the pump installer or the pump infrastructure to get the water into your plant, I mean, it's just, you're gonna see. I think a lot of complexity, and then, you know, you'll be working with your team to try and find a way to. Uh, make it more measured for how silt can implement it. And to go out and be working really hard on getting grants to to find it.
I will say, it's been a little bit of a roller coaster for me, uh, and I know Trey too, you know, we, uh. Uh, that thirty million dollars was kind of like a, you know, you know, kind of a rude slap in the face, because it was such a big number. Um, but it also is something that we consistently heard from our former operator. Uh, Jack, who used to say that there needs to be some upgrades, and then he would turn around and say it's all good. So we could, I I I mean, it was, uh, it was not a consistent message. Uh, but it's something, we are operating, and remember, I talked earlier during the work session about the amount of money coming out of the federal government. These days for infrastructure, we are in a time period where, um. I think towns like ours that are really in need of something like this can expect some some help from. Uh, you know, these federal dollars, and when I talked about the roller coaster. You know, early on, and I may have even reported to you that it sounded like the the state was gonna. Was going to be able to provide the matching funds for any federal grant we we got, at least that's what we were told. Only five or six weeks ago, um, since then, we've heard from that very same agency and state government that there are so many requests for help. That they are probably unlikely to be able to provide that amount of money for some of these, some of these grants. So the state revolving fund, which is what you use to fund a lot of these projects, will be where we turn. For a portion of this money, I think we're gonna get some grant money, I don't think there's any doubt. But we're probably gonna look at some some loans also, that are really favorable in terms of interest rates, but it's still a loan that you end up paying back. And the ratepayers pay.
Yeah, you have to find answer rates.
So what I've asked, you know, Trey and and our 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 water plant engineer. Uh, Zankinella to do is go back and really. Impress upon Dewberry that we need to do better than. Thirty million dollars, by the way, the lower end of that number was, I think, about twenty-two, which, that doesn't make me sleep anymore. But still.
When we get to the wastewater plant that's looking like seventy to eighty million dollars.
Oh, yeah.
To meet state regulations.
Yeah, and I'm 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 telling these guys, let's let's do one at a time, I mean, one big number at a time.
Yeah.
I mean, it's gonna be right on the heels, you know, as soon as we get water done, we gotta start talking about wastewater. Because that's gonna come really fast, and by twenty thirty-two.
Yes.
Uh, I mean, those, as we've talked about, regulations go into effect, I think, in twenty-seven or twenty-eight. And then in by thirty-two, they need to be fully implemented, or we face some some, uh, some penalties or something, but. Thinking about water first, um, all the way to the point where I've talked with Rifle about. You know, maybe we have some sort of workaround with them, because they have a big upside capacity. What's it look like to, you know, to for them to treat the water and to deliver it here? I don't know what that means, I don't, but, you know, Dewberry, uh, is gonna gonna look at that for us too, I mean, there's gotta be some.
Heard what their water rates are, so it wouldn't be cheap.
Well, that's exactly right, I I don't know that we wanna pay those.
No.
You know, uh, but we're not gonna be irrigating with it either, so, you know, there's some. Um, I I mean, but that, you know, we've gotta look at all the different possibilities.
What I got from Drew Barry and Zankinelli was that plant.
No kidding.
Not even the taps we've already approved is a hundred percent maxed out. Not in that meeting, when I, oh, you know, when I was talking to Zankinelli. Uh, I did the math with him, and I was like, that's maxed out, and he's like, exactly, and then we already have, how many taps are coming, I mean, there are a lot of taps. Gonna come down the pipe here real quick with these developments.
Yeah. We're getting votes to completely maxed on.
I mean, I would, yeah, I'm all for giving, you know, people water for sure, if we have the, if we had it. The ability of it.
We're also not gonna get, I would assume we're not gonna get grants if we try and do a twelve million dollar fix.
I don't know.
Would they, all the grant people are gonna say you're not building a plant that meets these standards, so we're not gonna give you anything. Trusty Handerhand said it before, at some point it's gonna get dire enough, the federal government's gonna come in.
Sure.
And they'll have to pay for a plant.
Yeah. Or a wastewater plant.
Or a wastewater plant, yeah.
I mean, I'd rather rely on them for wastewater than. I really think there's a, I think there's a solution within reach.
Yeah.
For water, I'm I'm not gonna give up hope on this, I mean, can't can't give up hope, we gotta do it, so, one way or another. Um, and I think we, you know, I think we're, we've we've had a lot of conversations recently about it, so hopefully we'll. Bill will bring you some, some news soon, I wanted to say good news, but.
Yeah, yeah, and then just, well, since they haven't had an official application yet from Panorama. When that does come down here, I will be recusing myself, because my parents live in that.
Sure.
Subdivision, understood.
I get it.
So I, I think going back, a- and again, this is an important discussion for the board to be having, but to go back to kind of what instigated it, if i- if the town is willing to at least consider a proposal from Panoramic, I think the direction from the board would be to tell them uh, that, you know, if, if we've got to start spending money on engineers to look at this, you need to be responsible for paying that. Uh, but it sounds like there, there may be a bigger picture question about where our water treatment plan is that you want to get some more information on before going down that road.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's fair to be like just very transparent on both ends, like almost like what you're saying, just let them know that the board's discussion, they can listen to it, is that, you know, we need more information about the capacity of our water treatment plant, not specifically, I think for their nineteen taps, but just maybe to Sam's point, all of the developers that we have approved in addition to theirs, you know, and then them being willing to pay for the, you know, expenses upfront. Cause I look at it like twofold, you know, much like the, the three out of town taps. I mean, you know, three times the tap amount plus three times the water fee amount. I mean, that does help. Fun, you know, you got nineteen taps, like that's a lot of money. You know, granted, it's not a huge dent into what needs to be done over there, but I mean, it could be helpful if we could figure it out. So that's all.
Yeah, there, I'm on board with that too.
Yeah.
They might find out it's more expensive to tie into the town than it is to redo their own system. Who knows?
Well, they.
They'll know that they.
They've looked at that and they know this is going to be more expensive, but in the long run, it's going to be the better.
Well, it'd give them, yeah, fire protection for sure.
So, yeah.
Right now, the, the tap fees on that are five hundred and seventy thousand a day.
Just for the tap.
For the nineteen tap fees.
Yeah.
Only twenty-nine and a half million more?
Exactly. We're almost there.
That's not divided by nineteen.
Nineteen, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody has the answer, but how many approved lots do we have right now? Couple hundred? I don't know.
That's good to know.
Well, uh, I mean, it's between.
Higher than that.
Iron Horse Basin, all those.
An iron horse and I mean, there's, we could have Nicole put some information together.
I think we have that. She's, I think she presented on that, uh, last year.
Yeah, I think we have some on that for sure.
But anyway, yeah, we have a, a bunch that are approved, you know, in regards to Flores's comment.
I don't know the number per single family home.
Yeah.
Um, per water, but it's a hundred gallons per person per day. So I know there was a number for the single, from the single family homes or whatever. That's something I'd like to know too.
We'll pull it together. We'll make that part of that, that larger conversation.
All right.
All right.
Any other?
Yeah, I just had one quick thing. Uh, if you take a look at your packet in, in there, you'll see a little deal that Nicole did on communication. I know, uh, you've expressed some, uh, interest in us, uh, you know, expanding that. And so, uh, wanted to just kind of let you know in a nutshell what we do, do. And then also, uh, to, to let you know, and you maybe you've noticed this, that Nicole's making a concerted effort to try to get a lot of the things that she puts out, uh, translated into Spanish, so we can hit more of our, our population. Um, and she's, uh, we have one, actually we have a couple of Spanish-speaking police officers and if they're on duty, she gets them to check out her, her work and before she sends it out. So that's cool. And then a couple of quick things about events. We wrapped up, uh, farmer's market last week. Uh, eight farmers markets, we've moved it down to Veterans Park, as you know, and I think overall the uh, reception's been pretty good. We were a little disappointed on numbers, but, uh, in talking to some of the vendors, they felt like uh, they, that they were doing, seeing just as many people and doing just as well as some of the bigger towns. So they weren't displeased at all. And hopefully they'll all, uh, come back next year and bring their friends. But I think part of it is just staying in a consistent place year after year and getting people used to it, getting people. And I think the music is a big draw. Uh, the beer is certainly helpful for some, especially when you have the music. So hopefully people are just coming out to enjoy the, you know, a nice night in the park. So.
And the guy in the music was nice.
Yeah, yeah, it really was. We had some really good, really good.
Sometimes I made it was really good.
I don't think I heard a bad one actually. So it's good stuff. And then last but not least, speaking of music, ZZ Top cover bands coming in, uh, Friday night, right here in Silk at Stony Ridge Pavilion. So, uh, hope everybody can come out for that. As always, it's a BYO everything. Chairs to drinks to food and, uh, hopefully we can get another good turnout for that concert. I haven't looked at the weather yet. I forgot to do that. So hopefully.
I think it's supposed to be pretty nice.
I think it's, it's, it's nice all week. So, uh, fingers crossed it'll stay in the seventies.
A little bit of rain, I think tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow. Yeah. So that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, updates from the board and board comments.
Uh, thanks to the staff for all you do and, and Nicole, thank you for connecting the dots with the Hispanic community. It's going to be big. Yeah, we don't always agree on subjects, but we get it done. So pretty happy with that.
Mr. Root?
Love the movie.
Okay. Trust Clausen?
I have nothing other than thank you Public Works for getting the leak fixed.
Um, just thanks for everybody's help. We've got a lot accomplished tonight.
Yep. No comment from me.
Um, just for the next meeting, could we get an update on what's going on or not with the cell tower agreement that we entered into and have never heard from again?
Yeah. Yeah. I haven't heard, still haven't heard anything.
Nothing is going on there?
Is that, is that good enough update or?
That is a good enough update. Just, uh, that's probably the most common thing I get stopped for these days is how about the cell services and so.
So bad.
Yeah, it's gotten real bad.
So, yeah.
The valley.
So it doesn't mean we couldn't start, you know, approaching.
Time in a little bit on the Verizon service. I have been in touch with our Verizon rep. They have some parts they need to replace in one of the, the sheds by one of the towers. Uh, what happens is that during the afternoons, while the days have been so hot, the fans are heating up and the service gets worse as the hotter they get. That's why you'll see in the afternoon, your service may be worse than in the mornings. So, uh, I just emailed him again today. He's checking with his guys to see when they plan on getting out here to replace those parts. Hopefully that should resolve the problems people are having, especially with Verizon. Cause I know it's not just Silt that Newcastle has been experiencing the same problems as well.
Awesome. Agreed up.
There you go.
I was told I didn't have a high enough plan to get the good service. So. So that's a much better, yeah, there's going to knock on everybody's service so you get the next plan up. So, um, other than that, that's all I've got. So, uh, we do have an executive session. Do we need a break or do you want to jump right into it? Uh, all right. So, um, I move to go into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to the matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators under CRS section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E in regards to one fifty-five riverfronted road.
A second.
Okay. Uh, motion by the mayor to enter an executive session for the stated purpose, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Not. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All's opposed. Motion carries unanimously. We will give a couple of minutes here to get into our breakout room.
And Sheila, if you can, I think Joe's on the, uh, the video feed. If you can make sure he gets invited into the breakout room.
Certainly.
Well, I see him. Yeah. I thought I couldn't figure out. Joe.
Hold on, guys. We can't hear you.
There we go.
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you now.
Okay.
Like she walks all the way back here.
I got it, Amy.
Trey.
All right. Uh, the time is now nine fifteen PM and the executive session has concluded. No formal action was taken in the executive session. Uh, the participants in the executive session were no one entered the executive session and no one left the session. Uh, but for the record, Joe Carpenter got his audio working at eight forty-six PM. Uh, for the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that this, that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion going to executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session and violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concern for the record. Uh, see none. The next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, make motion to adjourn.
Second. Justin got it.
Uh, motion to adjourn by the mayor Pro Tem Not, seconded by trustee Brittenall. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries unanimously.
Yep.
Spoiler.
Spoiler.
Okay.
Oh.
I know.
Four or five.